Get his number later. You ready?
I'm very ready. On Friday.
Let me tell everybody how Bernie is.
All right.
Yeah.
For last.
What we got going on?
You got us? Janice.
Hey, look like a construction company running out of... So he's sitting in Hopper Avenue? No, how long was he in the hookey for? I don't know. He ree- he ree- he's had now.
Good morning. Let's bring Rankin County Board of Supervisors Board Meeting to order, April fifteenth. A little bit after nine o'clock, if we could, let's have Mr. Craig Slay, if you could. Could you do our indication?
Father, thank you again. We pause at this time to come before you to acknowledge your presence here and ask for your blessing on our time here this morning. Father, thank you for taking us through the weather events that we have had recently, Lord. I pray that you'll continue to look out for those who are first responders, those who are responsible, Father, for keeping us protected and safe. I thank you for their sacrifice and that of their families. Father, pray that you'll be with these gentlemen this morning, that as they consider the business of the county, they'll look to you first for their guidance. Father, they'll consider your word, and then, Father, they'll look for the best interest of our citizens, all of our citizens, Lord, and make the decision that is in keeping with your will. Christ knows the prayer.
Amen. Thank you, Craig. This time, we have public comments of recognition, Central Mississippi Regional Library Assistant Director Mara Villa, Managers Tina Moni, Pila Hachi, Nikki Shoemaker, Sandhill Linda Wolf, Brandon Ann Marsh, Reservoir Shirley Dennis, Pearl Gwen Davis, Florence Regina Hudson, Puckett Dwayne Helms, and Richland Ashley Biggs... I'm sorry, Richland Ashley Biggs Flowood. So, at this time, Mara, good morning.
Good morning, and thank you. Yesterday actually kicked off National Library Week, and to celebrate, I'm glad y'all had a board meeting on the fifteenth. Today, we would like to present y'all with homemade cake that is probably as delicious as it looks. Actually, it was made... One of the things, I don't know if people in this room know, libraries try to keep up with new and innovative things to offer to our public, and so what we're offering now is cake pans, novelty cake pans, for people to check out. And actually, Linda's library at Brandon hosts them, but any library in Rankin, Scott, Simpson, or Smith County can check out these cake pans, and it's anything like a Barbie carriage, or a book that's sitting here, Elmo, you name it, there's probably a cake pan that you can borrow, and all you have to do is go to our online catalog and put in cake pans, and you will come up with a list of all the cake pans that have to offer. You can even make... I think there's even things to make cake pops with, right, Linda?
Yes.
So, that's one of the things that we brought here today. Also, I just want to say, if you don't have a library card, please get one. It's important. Our Rankin County libraries are probably some of the... Not probably, are the best in the state. I've been here for ten months, I've been learning the business, talking to the different funding authorities of our county, and I'm really, really positive and feeling great about what our libraries offer to our citizens, how we help other people. In fact, I saw one of our... One of the former... One of my former moms that used to bring her twins here, and it just warmed my heart that she remembered who I was, and I remember her twins, and they're now five. So, I know that y'all have plenty to do on the agenda. We also have brochures that have our statistics from fiscal year 2013, so that if any of our citizens want to know what our libraries do, how many people visit it, how many people check out, how many is in our collection, we'll have that information for you. It's amazing that after ten months, or really probably fifteen months when I was sitting here in May, how great of support we have from our supervisors for our public libraries. So, with that being said, I hope y'all have a wonderful day. I hope that if we're not doing the job that you need us to do, that's the people in our audience, or you here, that you feel comfortable to come to me and say, "How can we make this better?" Because I know that we all, as people, respond better if we have this collective effort of how can we make things better for our citizens? Because we do things for our... There's not any small kids in here. Yesterday, I was at a breakfast. Our kids are not our future, they're our now.
Right.
So, we're helping them become our future.
Right.
We have to take care of them now, so that they can take care of us later, and that's what we can do with our library cards, with leaving our... With having funding for our libraries, and taking care of these fabulous librarians. If you... Would y'all please stand up if you're a Central Miss... Rankin County librarian? I just want y'all to see how beautiful they look.
Well, I'd like to say, Mara, with the exception of one, and Dwayne, I know you know who you are, so...
Handsome too.
There you go. Hey, if... And what I'd like to say, too, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, thank you so much. You've stepped it up. You know, I work with a lot of you that... In the branches and stuff, it's just, it's wonderful to have great branch managers, and Mara, you have definitely stepped up the game. I know it was big shoes to fill, and you've done a wonderful job, and we appreciate you. And I'd like to see... Chuck, do you think we could get them all up here and just get a picture? That way, I mean, it is National Library Week, so if you guys wouldn't mind coming forward, we'd like to get a picture right quick, if Chuck's camera works.
I don't believe I said that.
Why don't you guys sit down and let them stand behind?
Hey, that works.
I like that idea.
Yes.
Whatever you want, Chuck.
Hey, Dwayne.
Hey.
How you doing?
Good morning. Good morning. How you doing?
All right. Ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
We appreciate it. Thank you so much.
We appreciate Tom.
We can't have been there that much. It's okay, Tom.
All right. Who's responsible for taking back the van?
We'll have to figure that one out. We'll get Janice to do that. Okay, moving on, we've got Ezra Hamilton and Mr. Walter Johnson, if you could...
I guess you know about this?
I need this one. Address the law.
All right. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to come. I own property on Andrew Chapel Road.
Okay.
And due to the restrictions y'all put on this property out there, I've lost four potential sales, and it primarily has to do with mobile homes. And since y'all put those restrictions in place, there have been others placed out there, and they don't even comply with codes. There are no safety codes or anything. I don't know if y'all have guidelines or what, given the people, whenever they place these, before you allow them to put... Turn electricity on, such as you do in normal building procedures? Because on building a house, you have to have a certificate of occupancy before you can get power turned on. The one... The property adjoining mine, man placed a mobile home there that's quite old, it's no front porch, and the steps do not comply, and the whole point is, you require people to wait six weeks, and this was... Everything that's out there was placed there during meets and bounds, and now you've zoned it residential. And I understand grandfathering, whereas there's a gas transmission plant right across the road from my property, there's other properties up and down the road that are... Some of them are in good state, some of them are run down, but yet, due to the fact that they have to wait six weeks to... That the public know what is being put in there is just... It restricts the sale of this land. People do not want to wait... I don't know what all y'all have... Make them comply with exactly, but I feel like this is being... This property basically discriminating against. I've gone and taken pictures of the properties out there, so that each of you can look at it. I've written notes about each property, and... But due to the fact that I've been trying to sell this for over two years, and I've lost four sales, one of them, a man wanted to put a shop in out there. Told he couldn't do it because it was on residential. I spoke with Mr. Johnson about it, spoke with Renee about it, and they wouldn't allow him to put a shop in because it was a... It was going to redo old cars, because it was going to have a lot of traffic there. The most recent one was, man wanted to put a mobile home there and put a building out there to run his printing business from, and told he couldn't do it because it was commercial. Well, and the fact that a mobile home came into play, the man intended to put a mobile home there, and when he got more money, he was going to build on it. If you look on there... Let me find the trailer. Picture number nineteen and twenty is of a mobile home next to my property, and I was told that they didn't want mobile homes out there older than 1998, and they wanted pictures of the property, of the mobile home before it was placed there. Well, if you look... You were to go out and look at the property, you would see it's rundown to start with. It should not have been allowed to be put there because of the conditions of it. The property... That particular property looks worse than any up and down Andrew Chapel Road.
You're talking about picture number nineteen?
Number nineteen and number twenty. That's the same property. It's supposed to be skirted, he hasn't even started to comply with. He's partially done the front, the back.
It looks like it's skirted, sir.
Sir, sir.
The one we're looking at is all...
It is skirted, partially skirted on the front. On the left-hand side, I don't have a picture of the rear. The picture does not do it justice. It appears like it is. Number twenty, if you look on the left-hand side, it appears there's some framing there. There's some framing there, and I spoke with Mr. Johnson about this two or three weeks ago, and he said he was going to send someone out to make sure this took place. As of this past Friday, the man had made no attempts to do anything. And there's another one on there, number twenty-seven. It's on down Andrew Chapel. It is right next to a house, and they entered the trailer through a brick between the house and the trailer. If you'll notice, there's someone living in this trailer. If you'll notice, there is no steps with a landing coming out of that trailer. It is not skirted.
When was this... When was that one put in?
Sir?
When was that one put in, the twenty-seven? I mean, it's been there a while?
It... I don't know how long it's been there. It's not just been put there within the last six months to a year, which is the one in nineteen and twenty, has been placed there within the last six months to a year.
Okay.
All I'm asking is that you let up on the restrictions, because this, like I said, most of this was done during meets and bounds, and you've zoned it residential. I respect residential, but anyone that's going to build out there, they're either going to buy the property on the road, tear it down and start over, or someone's going to develop it, they're going to cut a road in there, go back in there and sell lots, and then it's going to be just like Baker Lane, where you've got Bellamy and the other subdivision about three-quarters of miles down on the right, and you've got another subdivision down there that was next to Moke's house. I lived on Baker Lane, 294 Baker Lane, for a couple of years, and the man that sold me the property developed a subdivision in there. You guys had to go in and put a street in because he couldn't fulfill it. Well, this really neither here nor there. My issue is with the trailers, and you... I mean, you're limiting the sale of this property, and all I'm going to do is get rid of it, but it's costing me money because of what's happened here. And all I'm asking...
Where is your property? One and two? I mean, what?
Let me get some pictures again. My property line is number one, that's the east side of it.
I got it.
Number two, you'll see a lady in the vehicle.
Right.
That's looking from the east back to the west, and then the third picture is where that driveway shown there, and it goes... You can see the trailer in the distance up there. That's close to the end of it, and that... And then, going over, the property line picture in there somewhere. But it's just two and a half acres that runs longways with it. Number sixteen shows the property line. Number sixteen shows the west side property line.
All right, I follow it. I got it.
Okay?
Yep.
And number four is of a... Number four and number five is of a trailer that has been put there a long time ago during meets and bounds. That is the closest property to mine on the east of it.
Okay.
And then the one on the left, which is the one that's been put there most recent within the last six months, he's not made to comply, and then, again, you restrict... You make people give six weeks' notice, so the people that reside there can make a decision whether or not they want to make... Allow another trailer in there. I don't know what more to say, other than I'm asking you're helping this matter because you're killing the sale of my property. All I want to do is sell it, and whatever y'all... It stands to reason that if a mobile home were going to be put in there, you would give them some criteria they would have to meet, and guidelines, and then before they've got their electricity turned on, you would send out the building inspector to see if they complied, see if these safety issues have been taken care... See that they've been skirted properly and so forth and so on. But obviously, now this is taking place, as obvious as it can be, because it hasn't happened. And where y'all... Where it's falling short from, I don't know. That's not my problem. So, I thank you for the time you've given me to come here, and I hope to hear back from you, so that I will know where I stand on it.
Well, thank you, Mr. Hamilton. We'll look into this and check with Renee's office.
Oh, by the way, the first time I ever went to the zoning board, right after I bought the property, I wanted to see what I could place. When I walked in there, first thing I was told, "You can't put a trailer there." I respected that. If I had it built there, I was going to put a metal building there, and I was going to live in it, but things changed. I didn't do that, and then I lost two sales immediately because of... I told the people they couldn't put a trailer there. The third one was a commercial person wanting to put a mobile... A place where he was redoing cars, and the fourth one was the printer. So, some kind of guideline. This lady needs to be given some more to work with or something there. And I spoke... Again, I spoke with Mr. Johnson, and he spoke with her, and I thought things were going to get worked out. She even called the last one to tell him... I don't know what she told him. I wasn't in on the conversation, but the deal fell through. I never heard back from the man, and it all had to do with the restrictions y'all got on it. Thank you again for the opportunity to come here.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton.
Have a good day.
You too. All right, this time, we have old businessman's approval, April third, 2014, April seventh, 2014. Got a motion by Mr. Brown, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries. This time, we have consent agenda items. I'd like to see number two aid be put on the regular agenda at the end of the meeting, be pulled from the consent, and if that's appropriate with the board.
I think there'd need to be a motion to do that.
I make a motion to approve the agenda, consent agenda minus two aids.
Second. Got a motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries. This time, we have Mr. John Sullivan, tax assessor.
First item, petition to change the assessment of 2013 real and personal property assessment rule.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Brown, second by Mr. Morrison. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries. This time, we have Mr. John Sullivan, tax assessor.
First item, petition to change the assessment of 2013 real and personal property assessment rule.
Second. Motion by Mr. Brown, second by Mr. Morrison. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Bridget Herring, purchasing clerk.
Good morning.
Morning.
The first item we have this morning is to award the bid for the collection of the household hazardous waste, and it's recommended that it be awarded to Care Environmental.
Motion approved. Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
And I'd be petition to adjust 2013 home state exemption subject.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Thank you. Charles Parker, county consulting engineer.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. I have two items on the agenda this morning, gentlemen. First one is our Wicklow Circle Storm Drainage Improvement. That's in Castle Woods, and I'm recommending to award the bid to Hartman Woodward Contractors, Incorporated, in the amount of seventy-nine thousand, one hundred forty dollars. I believe all of you have a bid tab, which I have placed up there. We have a lot of bids.
You didn't give me a magnifying glass to go and...
Well, that was on purpose, sir.
Yeah, well, that is pretty tough, Buster.
I believe it was thirteen bidders, wide range on the bids, but we're recommending an award to the low bidder.
Does this come within what we estimated, or did we...
Yes, sir. Our estimate was eighty-five thousand.
So, we're coming in...
Motion approved.
But you can see, it was a wide, wide range of bids.
Right. Got a motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Brown. Any more questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Thank you. And the second item I have on the agenda is our Cowan Creek subdivision. This is a development in Mr. Brown's area, out of Glen's view. We had a preliminary development conference, and Mr. Brown was in that conference, and anyway, we went over the project and seen nothing wrong with it, so I would recommend approval of that preliminary plan this morning.
Motion approved.
Got a motion by Mr. Brown, second by Mr. Morrison. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Got anything, Buster?
That's it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Craig Slay, board attorney.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Looks like for me this morning, we're just setting public hearings. They're all going to be set on May the first at nine a.m. Each of the six that are listed there are nuisance property hearings that are being set.
So, we can take all?
And so, we can take them all at once. I do want to highlight one, which is number B, the public hearing for James Neese at 130 Andrew Chapel Road. Since that was the subject of Mr. Hamilton's comments this morning, I did want to highlight and point out that that... That the very property that he's talking about is actually being set for nuisance hearing, so I wanted to make sure everybody got to hear that. We are actually working that piece properly.
So, Renee, there has been contact made with the gentleman, why he's not in compliance on his...
There has. I checked that this morning. If the trailer is skirted, he does have it skirted.
Is there any other...
Are you talking about the one that Mr. Hamilton's...
Next door to Mr. Hamilton's property.
Right, next door. It is skirted. I checked it this morning.
On the sides?
Yes, sir. He had started, he just had not finished, but today, when I came by this morning, the sides were done. I didn't see the back, but, you know, we can check that. I didn't take a look at the back, but the sides and the front were all skirted.
Was that the only piece of the nuisance property that didn't meet, or that could be part of a nuisance property?
This James Neese, 130 Andrew Chapel Road, that's a piece that's in that neighborhood out there.
Right.
It's not the one that he was speaking specifically about, where the trailer has moved in within the last year.
Right.
Um...
But there are other things that could be nuisance properties out of what I'm saying, or is it just the skirting?
Oh, for that one that he was speaking to, he has a pile of limbs that he's brought in on the property. He understands he cannot continue to do that, and that it has to be cleaned up. We have talked to him.
Okay, so you're working with him.
He said he can take care of it.
Have you seen signs that he's operating a business out of that location?
Um, Dwayne has checked the property. He's shaking his head, "No, I've not seen that." Nothing specific that leads you to believe that, no.
Okay.
You know, and I would say that that... There was a house that burned there years ago, so he cleaned that up, you know, so he has done some work on that property before he moved that mobile home in.
All right.
So, what we can do, Ms. President, with y'all's indulgence, is simply to have one motion setting all six of these for our hearing on nuisance property, May one, 2014, at nine a.m.
I'm going to...
Got a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries. That was pretty quick there.
I want to give later... I want to know more about F. Just later, just sometime. Okay, thank you.
Hey, Mr. J.K. Stringer, junior county administrator.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first item will be the claims document in the amount of seven million, eight hundred ninety thousand, nine hundred thirty-four dollars and forty-three cents.
Motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
I'm sure there's a good reason.
I'm sorry. Okay. The second item is, we discussed these fire trucks before, approval to award bid in the amount, or save fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars as a package on two 1995 FL-80 fire trucks to Brindley Mountain Fire Apparatus LLC, and these trucks were previously surplus to buy the county.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve? Second. Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morrison. Any questions? Let me ask you if they're to sell these, does this go back into the fire, into the...
Right.
Okay, goes back into their budget?
Right.
Okay. Any more questions? All in favor?
Somebody might want to give to Brown.
Yeah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Okay. The third item, Mr. President, is I think that we'd like to have a discussion on the proposal, on the Chancery Court building. Just refresh on the history of that, this item. We have talked about the need for a Chancery Court building, the need for a Chancery Court building, and with the current makeup of the Chancery Court in Rankin County, which we have two Chancery Judges. There was a proposal before the legislature to add a third chancellor. That did not pass. However, I think that there is a really good chance that it will pass next time, and for several reasons, we think that. And so, we need to discuss, since we didn't get the third judge, I know there's been some discussion, and some people saying, "Do we really need a new Chancery Court if we don't get the third judge, et cetera, et cetera?" Also, as part of this discussion, I've talked with Mr. Parker. One of the questions that keeps coming up is, "Where would you build it if you built it?" And the general consensus is that we could probably build it back behind the current Chancery Court, where the parking lot is there and so forth, but the question keeps coming up, "Can you really put it there? Would it cost too much for site work and so forth to put it there?" So, one of the things I'd like for us to consider is to contract with our consulting engineer, and to make a determination, is that site suitable for a building of the type that we're talking about, meaning a building that would be about ten thousand square feet per floor for about three floors, and plus parking.
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign, motion carries. Thank you. Ms. Bridget Herring, purchasing clerk.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
The first item we have this morning is to award the bid for the collection of the household hazardous waste, and it's recommended that it be awarded to Care Environmental.
Motion approved. Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign, motion carries.
The next item is to award the bid for mosquito control products and services. I recommend that they be awarded as the attach- you have the attachment in your bid packet.
Make a motion to approve as presented. And motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Brown. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign, motion carries.
The final item, I'm requesting authority to advertise bids for semiannual asphalt and semiannual supplies for the unit system.
Motion approved, second.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Morrison. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Charles Parker, county consulting engineer. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. I have two items on the agenda this morning, gentlemen. First one is our Wicklow Circle Storm Drainage Improvement. That's in Castle Woods, and I'm recommending to award the bid to Hartman Woodward Contractors Incorporated in the amount of seventy-nine thousand, one hundred forty dollars. I believe all of you have a bid tab which I had placed up there. We have a lot of bids.
You didn't give me a magnifying glass to go and look at.
Well, that was on purpose, sir.
Yeah, well, that is pretty tough, Buster.
I believe it was thirteen bidders, wide range on the bids, but we're recommending award to the low bidder.
Does this come within what we estimated, or do we?
Yes, sir, our estimate was eighty-five thousand.
So we're coming in.
But you can see it was a wide, wide range of bids.
Right. Got a motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Brown. Any more questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign, motion carries.
Thank you. And the second item I have on the agenda is our Cowan Creek subdivision. This is a development in Mr. Brown's area out of William's view. We had a preliminary development conference. Mr. Brown was in that conference, and anyway, we went over the project and see nothing wrong with it. So I would recommend approval of that preliminary plan this morning.
Motion approved.
Got a motion by Mr. Brown, second by Mr. Morrison. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign, motion carries. Got anything, Buster?
That's it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Craig Slay, board attorney.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Looks like for me this morning, we're just setting public hearings. They're all going to be set on May the first at nine a.m. Each of the six that are listed there are nuisance property hearings that are being set.
So we can take all?
And so we can take them all at once. I do want to highlight one, which is number B. The public hearing for James Neese at one thirty, Andrew Chapel Road, since that was the subject of Mr. Hamilton's comments this morning. I did want to highlight and point out that that, that the very property that he's talking about is actually being set for nuisance hearing. So I wanted to make sure everybody got to hear that. We are, we are actually working that piece properly.
So Renee, there has been contact made with the gentleman, why he's not in compliance on his.
There has. I checked that this morning. If the trailer is skirted, he does have his skirted.
Is there any other?
Are you talking about the one that Mr. Hamilton's?
Next door to Mr. Hamilton's property.
Right, next door. It is skirted. I checked it this morning.
On the sides?
Uh, yes, sir. He had started, he just had not finished, but today when I came by this morning, the sides were done. I didn't see the back, but you know, we can check that. I didn't take a look at the back, but the sides and the front were all skirted.
Was that the only piece of the nuisance property that didn't meet, or that could be part of a nuisance property?
Uh, this James Neese one thirty Andrew Chapel Road, that's a piece that's in that neighborhood out there.
Right.
It's not the one that he was speaking specifically about where the trailer has moved in.
Right.
Within the last year.
But there are other things that could be nuisance properties out of what I'm saying, or is it just the skirting?
Oh, um, for that one that he was speaking to, um, he has a pile of limbs that he's brought in on the property. He understands he cannot continue to do that and that it has to be cleaned up. We have talked to him.
Okay, so you're working with him.
He said he'd take care of it.
Have you seen signs that he's operating business out of that location?
Um, Dwayne has checked the property. Um, he's shaking his head, no, I've not seen that. Um, nothing specific that leads you to believe that, no.
Okay.
You know, and, and I would say that that, there was a house that burned there years ago, so he cleaned that up, you know. So he has, uh, done some work on that property before he moved that move home in.
All right.
So, uh, what we can do, Ms. President, with y'all's indulgence, is simply to have one motion setting all six of these for, uh, for a hearing on nuisance property, May one, twenty fourteen, at nine a.m.
So.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Johnson to set these public hearings. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign, motion carries. That was pretty quick there.
I want to get later, I want to get, I want to know more about that. Just later, just sometime after. Okay, thank you.
Hey, Mr. J.K. Stringer, junior county administrator.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first item, uh, will be the, um, the claims document in the, uh, amount of seven million, eight hundred ninety thousand, nine hundred thirty-four dollars and forty-three cents.
Motion to approve.
Second, got a motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign, motion carries.
I'm sure there's a good reason.
I'm sorry. Okay. The second item is, uh, we discussed these fire trucks before. Approval to award bid in the amount, or save one hun- fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars as a package on two nineteen ninety-five F.L. eighty fire trucks to Brinley Mountain Fire Apparatus LLC. And these trucks were previously, uh, surplus to buy the county.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
So, Mr.?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morrison. Any questions? Let me ask you if, uh, if they're to sell these, does this go back into the fire, into the, okay, goes back into their budget?
Yeah.
Okay. Any more questions? All in favor.
Somebody might want to give it to Brown.
Yeah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign, motion carries.
Okay. Uh, the third item, uh, Mr. President, is I think that we'd like to have a, a discussion on the, uh, on the proposal, on the Chancery Court building. Just refresh on the history of that, uh, this item. We have talked about, uh, the need for a Chancery Court building. The need for a Chancery Court building, uh, and with the current, uh, makeup of the Chancery Court in, uh, Rankin County, which we have two Chancery judges. There was a proposal before the legislature to add a third chancellor. Uh, that did not pass. However, I think that there is a really good chance that it will pass next time, and for several reasons, we think that. And so we need to discuss, since we didn't get the third judge, I know there's been some discussion on, some people saying, do we really need a new Chancery Court if we don't get the third judge, et cetera, et cetera. Also, as part of this discussion, I've, uh, talked with Mr. Parker. One of the questions that keeps coming up is where would you build it if you built it? And the general consensus is that we could probably build it back behind the current Chancery Court, where the parking lot is there and so forth. But the question keeps coming up, can you really put it there? Would it cost too much for site work and so forth to put it there? So one of the things I'd like for us to consider is, uh, to, uh, contract with our consulting engineer and to make a determination, is that site suitable for a building of the type that we're talking about? Meaning a building, uh, that would be about ten thousand square feet per floor for about three floors and plus parking. And just get that question answered, because anytime we move forward, that's the first question we've got to answer anyhow, regardless of whom we, uh, contract with and what professional we're dealing with. That's a basic question. As I indicated last meeting, uh, we went out with our request for qualifications. We got eleven responses, varying all the way from, uh, some of them, uh, commercial real estate people said, I'll come and build you a building, lease it to you, all the way to the other end, some of them, uh, the typical, uh, bid, uh, advertise, design, bid, build, and then, uh, then all the way to, uh, what we would call the turnkey. But until we, one, decide what we want to go forward with, and two, where we would put it, I don't think we can go much further. So that's the discussion I'd like to have this morning.
The ten thousand feet per floor for three floors, is that just for the courts, or is that going to put land records?
That would, that would, uh, put land records in everyone in that building. That would put, what that would do is that would put the court, the, uh, Chancery, uh, uh, all the Chancery operations to include land records, Chancery clerk, all his land records. Also, that would put, uh, the tax collector and the tax assessor in there and keep them all together. So the, so the public would go to one building to get all of their, uh, transaction done.
And these are just estimates?
These are estimates, incidentally.
Now, when you're saying, let me ask you a question. Are you honing in just on that side, or would that person actually come in and look at different sites also? Or you, or you're basically talking about looking at that site preferably, or would that, would that include other sites?
I, I think that we're looking at that site preferably, because it's just the location.
Right.
And keeping it all here centrally. Uh, there are, there are some, uh, any other sites that have been discussed so far, uh, there are some issues with.
Right.
And so the very first question we got, you know, most people that I've discussed it with, and this is not a scientific survey
Right.
by any means, uh, thinks that that would be the preferred site. And we need to answer the question, can we in fact build there or not?
Right.
And from then, we can move forward.
You're thinking there's enough room.
If we have to look at other sites.
There's enough room there for the building as well as parking?
Well, that's, that's what, that's what we're asking. That's what we're asking.
Right.
And, uh, and, and if so, if there's enough room, would it cost so much that it would be prohibited in, uh, in the dirt work and so forth?
Well, you know, I'd, I'd said it before, that, uh, whoever, whoever we choose on that, if we did go forward on that, I think it's imperative that we do keep in, uh, in good relations with the city of Brandon with their overall plan of action for what's to come, because I just don't want to see a building placed somewhere and all of a sudden, whoops, you know, that's just not part of there, you know, because that's put, that's, that's, be real, this is downtown Brandon still.
I, I agree, and that, that, that's, I acknowledge that.
Right.
We acknowledge that. In fact, uh, we've had some preliminary discussions, informal discussions.
Right.
Uh, with the administration of Brandon.
Okay.
Uh, they know we're looking at this, and, uh, with the understanding that, uh, if we move forward, we will be talking to them.
Gotcha. Okay.
And, and so if, if possible, uh, I, I could get a motion to approve the twenty-five hundred dollars with our consulting engineer to do a, uh, survey of the site back there.
Do you have a consulting engineer?
Well, we have one for the county.
Him?
Him. That's the reason I use the term consulting engineer?
So what is it that you're going to want to get out of this, out of this survey?
Okay, one is, is that, is that site, uh, the best we can determine acceptable for the building that we're talking about? We hear, or I hear, skepticism on one, it costs too much to put a building there because commonly called the dirt work issue. Second, is there enough space there, uh, to put the type of building we want to put, uh, and parking? And so we just want to know if that's an acceptable site for a building.
Do we have an alternative?
If it's not, then we got to start looking somewhere else.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Do we have any some alternative sites that may want to include in this? Or have we, anybody got any?
The only alternative site presently, uh, is of course out on Marquette Road. That's, that's the alternative for everything, as you all know, uh, is out on Marquette Road. But there's some questions about that site also.
About the church.
And, and, and then, without that, we're in the process, if we build a building, we may have to buy land, as strange as that sounds.
Well, that would be the case here, wouldn't it?
No, that, well, we, we own that land back there. The only thing that we don't own back there is the small, uh, bank parking lot. And I've talked to the bank, and they're willing to work with us on that.
So the land behind the parking lot, we own?
Uh, yeah, quite a bit of that.
Not really sure what that north line is, but it goes back a good ways.
I think we have, what, about four acres there?
Is that sixteen section land there?
No.
How many acres is it that we want to get surveyed?
Around four.
So Buster, you thinking you can come in at twenty-five hundred dollars or less to get this checked out? Yeah, that's what I'm wanting.
Well, it does, but, uh, don't, don't think that this assessment I'm doing is, is big league now. I talked to the administrator about it, and, uh.
No doubt in my mind it wasn't big league.
He, he showed, he showed me, you know, the tax map of what was out there.
Right.
And, and he wanted me to determine if a three-story, ten thousand square foot per floor facility could be placed out there with added parking. So I'm, I'm not looking at any design. I don't even have a boundless survey. They mentioned some property behind the property out there. I, I don't know, except I think there's a big hole out there. But I don't have a, a description of that. I don't have anything. So if, if I, if I have to determine that and put that into the overall plan that we're going to come up with, then I can't do it for twenty-five hundred dollars, if I'm going to survey it. But this was just a, an overview only, mainly to see if we could put a ten, ten, excuse me, ten thousand square foot footprint out there and have parking for, and in talking to, talking to the attorney, uh, indicated maybe for a hundred cars, a hundred parking places, when court was in session, and that basically.
Yeah, what, what I'm, and, and, and we may have miscommunicated, that would be in addition to parking that's required for staff.
Staff. So, you know.
About a hundred spaces for constituents utilizing the facility.
Right.
Court operations, et cetera, but that's in addition, that would be in addition to your staff departments.
Right. So that includes basically topo, all of your?
No surveying, no.
No.
None?
No.
Just to look at it, basically?
Just drawing a picture.
Look at it, see, and try to place a ten thousand square foot facility on it and see what's left for park. No design and no survey included in that, no.
I make motion to add this item to the agenda.
Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Brown. Any more questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign, motion carries. Now we need to take action to, on this to move ahead.
I make motion to approve, uh, any hearing services due to a survey for twenty-five hundred dollars. So give us whatever we can get out of it.
Squeeze as much as we can. Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Johnson. Any more questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign, motion carries. How long you think it'll take on that there?
Sir?
Buster, how long you think it'll take you to go out there?
Well, uh, let's see, it would probably take a couple of weeks.
Okay.
Maybe a little bit longer now.
Couple of weeks, that's good.
I've already had a preliminary discussion with some of my people, so we can get on it built in soon.
Wonderful.
Uh, but, uh, I would say two or three weeks.
Okay.
Either that or six months.
Couple of weeks sounds great.
Okay.
All right. Is that all we have on the Chancery Court building?
There will be more.
Oh, I know there's going to be more.
There'll be more later.
Okay.
And, uh, we do need to continue to think about, uh, based on this, whether we, what we want to move forward with.
Which direction we need to go.
What direction we need to go. And, uh.
I think that's a start, good starting point.
All right. The, the next item, uh, Mr. President, is discussion of the multipurpose pavilion. Uh, actually, the D and E, the two items really kind of join together here. And, uh, the, and it's on the agenda for just that, discussion, if there needs to be continued discussion.
We really haven't had any as a board yet, so I don't know how we can continue if we hadn't started.
Well, there's been, there's been quite a few, there's been quite a bit of dialogue.
It's been bits and pieces.
Yeah, I've heard a lot, but I don't know what the plan is.
There is, see, that's, that's the issue. Uh, everybody has run around opposing a plan that never existed. And that's been part of the issue. There's been a lot of discussion, a lot of dialogue on what could be a plan, but there's been never a plan. Uh, there's been a lot of dialogue on that, uh, for example, uh, there's been a lot of dialogue out there, absolutely, you can't give that place away. Well, there's never been a proposal to give it away. There's been a lot of dialogues saying, the government's never been in business to make a profit. There's never been a proposal to make a profit. Okay, so, uh, but there's been a lot of dialogue, and like, sometimes dialogue takes its own way that the dialogue becomes fact, uh, without being fact. Now, what we're doing here is if you, if no decision is made to sell, and I use the word sell, okay? If there is not a decision made to sell the property to Brandon, then the county continues to own the property. The county continues in some, some form to operate that facility. But it would take a positive action by this board to sell that property, and until that is done, uh, the county retains ownership of the property, the county continues to operate the property. Now, what item E is, is a motion that, uh, if you desire to do it, to form an evaluation committee to say if the county, assuming the county retains ownership, county retains operation, to a committee of interested parties, which would include quite a few of the people here this morning, to take a look at that facility and say, okay, how do we continue to utilize that facility for what it was intended to be utilized for, uh, in the future? And to come back to this board then with a recommendation on how to do that. That's, that's where we are on the discussion part of it.
Well, one thing, one thing on the discussion, and I think the reason that important for the discussion is I think some of the things that you, uh, were touching on, the reason it's become, what it's become is because it has not been any discussion in an open meeting where people would hear that it was a thought, it was consideration, or whatever. And so they're having to try to piece together what they're piecing. So that's one of the reasons, I think it was and has been important for us to have had some type of discussion on that. So I, I appreciate us being able to, uh, discuss this, and, uh, I hope someone else has some comments or whatever on, on the whole situation. As far as the, uh, committee, um, I think it's a good idea. I noticed my name's on it. I'll be glad to serve on it. I didn't lobby for that or anything, but I would certainly, uh, be glad to, to, I think we owe that as an evaluation. Uh, it looks like some good names and people that have the interest of the, um, facility and the county. But I would like to say that I think, um, these people, as well as everybody else that's been involved, as I've said before, fully support the, uh, the direction that Brandon wants to go as far as their recreational, uh, vision. And I think it'd be a great thing for the county, and I don't think I've heard anyone, um, uh, have any negative thoughts on that at all. They've all been supportive. Everyone that I've ever talked to has been supportive. They just would like to have this building, consideration of this building being used as it is. So I want to just clear that up. This, it's not one against the other. It's everybody working together.
So this, I just want to clarify, I want to make sure, all of these people that have been listed, they've all been approached? Is that what I'm saying? I guess that's what I'm hearing, all of them have been approached, and every one of them have agreed to be on this committee?
That is my understanding. These names were provided to us from this group.
Okay.
Uh, rather than, we didn't make this up.
Right. And I guess.
And I recognize the names as all the people who have voiced, uh, uh, their, you know, interest in this.
Right. I guess my second question would be, you know, in, in, just taking off of what Jared just said, uh, I understand that, you know, assessment of the current facility, so would this committee also entertain the motion that if this was not the right place, would they assess a new facility at a different location? I mean, is that going to be part of too, or just this facility as a committee?
Well, why would we even discuss trying to get away from it?
I'm just asking the question. I mean, it's, if you've got a, if you've got a committee that's looking out for the best interest of, from what I understand, the building was flipped, was not done right in the first place, so would, while you've got a great committee of this, and I do agree that this is a great committee, I saw the names on here. So would they need to assess, is this exactly what we need, or do we need to move forward and try to figure out a way to get the best?
I'm looking at the, at the motion as presented, and I, I think that what you're suggesting would be beyond the scope of the committee. Looks to me, uh, like the, the scope would be to evaluate the current facility and to make recommendations concerning its operation. If they come back and say, if, if their report was, we find that the building cannot be feasibly operated.
Right.
Then it's beyond the scope to discuss what happens next. That, that would fall back on the purview board.
Right.
To decide what do we do now?
I think if it came, and I'm just thinking out loud on this one, I think if it came to that point, then a, uh, then maybe this same committee or a committee, then if it came to the point that this facility was, uh, in jeopardy, let's put it that way, or was not, I don't know, not feasible to, for this one to stay here, then I would say this same committee or another committee then would meet in helping to decide where's the most, uh, logical, practical place for the, uh, county, and, and look at it from that way. Like I said, again, I'm, I'm thinking out loud, um, I hadn't really have a time to really think that through, but I would think it takes some input from a, uh, a group to, to help evaluate that other location, wherever it may be.
Okay, my final question, I guess on this, I don't want to leave it open-ended, you know, if we go with that, I sure don't want to leave it open-ended that, you know, we have, we've formed committees before that we didn't put a timetable on. You know, all of a sudden, it ends up in two thousand sixteen, all of a sudden, they come back with recommendations. I mean, surely, we've got to put some kind of limitations and timetables so that, you know, because I know everyone is busy. I do. You know, and this is very lucrative, you know, and everyone is wanting to make this work. But I do think that we need some time limitations for that committee to meet and address back to the board with those assessments.
Well, we have some true needs, like we are down one personnel, so.
Right.
I mean, are we looking to, out of this committee, to come up with an individual?
Yes, the committee, from what, what I read, would help, um, look at, was a, um, possible personnel or somebody qualified to then, uh, bring to the board as a recommendation. And, um, also. And, um, also, you know, Greg, something you're, you're right, and I don't see the, a committee, um, dragging this out because they're certain, certainly this is something that has to move, keep moving on, and we have, uh, responsibility to the community.
Right.
As well as the overall county to keep this oper, in operation. So certainly, we're not gonna, I would say, not drag around to the point that it, it deteriorates.
Right.
It's also, we're gonna, gotta keep its standards up and keep, uh, shows coming and things that people are used to participating. So I wouldn't see this being anything drags on. And too, I'm sure there's some, some recommendations, gonna need to maybe some changes or some improvements. I know there's, uh, also been, I think, some type of fire inspection, Brandon had a, a fire inspection, so some of that obviously has to be addressed too.
Well, let me, thank you. Uh, in addressing that, those items, first off, that fire review.
Yeah.
Uh, was a normal process.
If it was normal, why haven't we ever got one before?
What?
Why haven't we ever got one before?
We do a fire assessment out there yearly.
But we haven't gotten a report like this before.
And the, uh, and so we get, those items have been addressed. There are two items on there that might require additional addressing. Uh, one is, uh, do we need additional fire plugs? Now, and secondly, has to do with the sprinkler system. There's been a sprinkler system in that building out there for years. It hasn't worked for years, and the reason why is that whenever it was fixed, it's an open air system, the winter time, it freezes and break again. And so, uh, we, we have to address that problem. I'm not saying we ignore it, but we have to address the problem. Other than that, the other items on that, uh, report were, uh, making sure we had the right number of fire, uh, extinguishers, replacing outlets, uh, plates, socket plates, that type of stuff. It's been done, done in-house.
You know, with the exception of the, uh, possession stand and stuff like that, it's not a lot can burn, you know, that metal building.
No, no, that's, uh, that, that building is probably not gonna burn down. The, uh, you know, I...
But anyway, we have addressed it, and I felt sure we had.
But the, uh, uh, that building is a pretty safe building from a fire standpoint.
Yeah, I would think.
And so, uh, that, but, be as it may, uh, there was a rumor that started, uh, that the purpose of that review was to shut it down. That was never discussed, never even thought of. It was the normal things that we do. Uh, so with that, the reason I think that what we, my proposal would be, let's let this group get together and hear what they have to say. And it's always the board's action, that, that group cannot hire anybody, only the board can hire someone. And, and find out what they have to say, and to, uh, let's have a good, open discussion. If we're gonna retain it and operate it, how we go about doing that.
All right, so...
I make a motion to approve this valuation committee.
Um, Mr. Stringer, this, this is quite an impressive committee that's been put together. However, I, my suggestion would be that there be an architect incorporated in this committee. Because whether we eventually, whether Brandon eventually obtains the existing facility, and we decide to build another one, which if they obtain that existing facility, there will be another facility constructed in close proximity to where the one is now. Wouldn't it be helpful to have him there in these discussions, or him or her, or whoever the architect has chosen? So that any changes that this committee comes up with, I mean, it, it says, consideration of the management of the multipurpose pavilion. So whether we're in the existing facility, or whether we're in a new and improved facility, it's still gonna have to have those management practices in place to make it more efficiently operated. I would think, rather than go through this entire process, and then the city of Brandon obtained the existing facility, and then us have to go to, to the planning process of hiring an architect and getting to the design, I think all those ideas could be incorporated as, as this building is assessed from a management standpoint from this point forward.
Wouldn't we be putting, I mean, if we did that, that would kind of give whatever architect we decide to put on this board almost a surefire guarantee he's gonna get the contract to do whatever work is gonna be needed. That doesn't really seem, you know...
Ms. Tucker, yes, ma'am.
I just have one comment on that. As far as this committee is concerned, um, I don't see the, the, the need of an architect. I think the people that are on this facility are aware enough and using enough and know what facilities all across the United States look like and their purpose. And I really think that would be a, a waste. An architect doesn't know how rodeo runs, or how a horseshoe runs, or a livestock. We have way more knowledge in that than an architect would, whether it be this building or another building, but of course, we're not interested in another building.
Okay.
We have, I mean, we have a person on this committee that is...
Is an architect?
No, he's not an architect, but architects are part of what causes problems in buildings. And I can say that as a...
I thought it was engineers.
That too. But it's just like, uh, if nobody was in building a house, your architect can hand you a set of house plans and they look fabulous to them, but they don't work for you.
Yes, Mr. President, okay.
You know...
I think we can handle that.
But, look, the thing about, and, and I understand what you're saying, Walter, but I would think, and this is me, I would think if it came to a point that down the road, we're looking at another building, a, a committee, obviously, or this committee, whatever, then it obviously would have to in, uh, include a maybe architect of the board's choice at that time.
We may want to consider, you know, what we're dealing with is some steps here. We may want to consider, and your idea about having a time limit.
Right.
Is this committee, uh, be, first off, this committee was not put together by the board or the board staff. Was not put together by me or anybody. This committee was put together by them. Okay? This is, uh, and, and with the names called into us as their proposal for the approval by this board. I think that it might not be beyond the realm to say, uh, to task this committee to come forward with their final report by the first of July.
I like that idea.
And as this committee then goes away, maybe another committee in their place. But it'll be another committee, uh, that, or this committee could be voted to continue.
Right.
But to do a final report, uh, back to the board on the operations of the facility by the first of July.
I believe I'd...
I have a discussion.
I would do a termination of the committee by the first of July, I wouldn't say it'd be terminated.
Well, I'm not saying a termination of it, but I do like the, uh, July first deadline, because like I said, everyone is busy. But as we all see, we all have, this is very vital to Rankin County. It's very vital to Brandon, it's very vital to the people that are riding the horses, equ, you know, 4H whatever. But we also owe it to everyone that we need to move on this and, and not just sit around and talk about it.
I don't think that's, I, I think, I don't see that being a problem.
Okay.
I mean, I don't see any, I think the, uh, concern for the facility is there, and there was, uh, there are lots that recognize there have been, uh, maybe some neglected needs.
Right.
And the collective management of everything, and I think you have a, a sincere group that really want to see, uh, do what they can to help this. So I don't, I don't, really don't see any lingering around.
All right, so will you amend your motion then to put a time limit as July first on that to, to bring back to the board?
Time limit to what, just to bring back, but not to terminate?
Just to bring back, not to terminate, to bring back.
Well, heck, it might be even before then, so...
Right, but up to, up to July first. Yes, sir.
And I would, I would just simply remind us that our first July board meeting is probably gonna be, I don't know for sure, it's gonna probably be over past July one. There's chances that we know July.
First meeting in July then.
Yeah. If I can suggest that...
It could be earlier than that. I mean, it may be a month from now.
Make it thirty June instead of one July.
Right. Hang on, guys, if we keep on...
Mr. President, could I have the floor?
Yes, sir.
Among the numerous, uh, and, and I almost say countless phone calls that I've had in regard to the multipurpose pavilion, when the idea was discussed of, of Brandon obtaining that facility and a new and improved facility being built, again, in close proximity to where the existing facility is, most everybody had some kind of a recommendation, well, you know, if you were gonna build another facility, you would need to do A, or we would need to do B. So that's why I'm, that's why I'm, or that's why I think there should be somebody from a design standpoint, and, and maybe these people are qualified to do the design. And to incorporate those changes that need to be made if a new facility is constructed. It may not be, need to be an architect, that may, that may just muddy the water. But I think that needs to be, not only the management of the facility, but I think in the back of their mind, they need to be thinking as they evaluate this property, well, if there was gonna be another facility built somewhere near here, and, and, and I mean in the, I'm saying in the industrial park, easy to find, easy, you know, close to the one that's already there, that those changes need to be incorporated into their thought process in the event that the property changes hands and we build a new facility and have it up and running before the city of Brandon takes over the existing facility. And I know an awful lot of that speculation, but I think we're remiss if we don't plan and look into the future and try to build one that can be utilized more for rodeos and, and all the things that it can't, you can't have, well, I won't go into the cane halves and the can halves, 'cause it's, it's far too numerous to mention. But everybody that I've talked to has said, if you're gonna do it, you need to do this, and you need to do that. And if, if there's gonna be a new facility, let's do it right this time. And so that's all I'm saying, is that if, if that should be the case, I want to make sure that those ideas are incorporated.
Well, I think you're right, but I think the people that use it are some of the best ones to come in and give ideas. Clearly, that's where we've heard some of the flaws, I think, I have, is from people that operate, use it on a, a regular basis. And I know I've heard, you know, they'll say, this is great, you know, if you could've, if you could've moved those pins a little over here, left this chute a little wider. The things that all, that's gonna come more from the people that use it. I think, uh, looking at this, obviously, this has got a group of people, and I, I, I agree. If it came to that point, I, you'd want input from the people that actually participate and use it.
So I'm for that.
Okay.
I'm, I'm okay with...
I think this group is capable of doing that.
I second Mr. Morrison's motion. All right, so let me, let me go back to...
Your own motion says a motion to approve, uh, and evaluate, a, a, a motion to approve an evaluation committee and report back to this board, uh, by the, uh, say, first meeting in July, or they're close by.
That is correct.
Okay, now...
A motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Bishop. Any more questions?
Got one out there if you want.
Yes, ma'am, if you will be the only one from the audience.
I will be very brief and quick, and I just want it to be said in public. We have no problem, I'm sure this committee in getting that done by the first of July is much quicker. However, you that do this for a living have had over two years to think about what you're doing and to have it in play. And you're gonna put a time limit on that. I just wanted that to be a comment made.
Thank you.
I think in order to get the motion approved, we're gonna have to put that time limit on there.
I agree, I agree.
Okay. Any more questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Okay. I think the only other piece of business is we need to go back and take a, take up, uh, paragraph two A, uh, from the consent.
At this time, I'd like to turn over the, uh, mic to, uh, Mr. Walter Johnson to attend this motion.
All right, let's record reflective supervisor Will Cox left the building, left the room.
As we, uh... We need to put that item on the, uh, agenda, to add it to the agenda, then take action.
We have a motion to add item A under...
Paragraph two A.
Two A.
From the consent agenda.
Agenda. Some of... We have a motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Brown, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve, uh, Lieutenant Craig to...
Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Brown, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Thank you very much.
We've got two other items, uh, when Mr. Will Cox comes back in, pretty, uh... And the first of these items that we, uh, need to add to the agenda that Laura talked about has to do with a, a mail-out from the, uh, circuit clerk.
We just need to, um, add additional postage for base management to send out letters, letters on the draft accounts. Um, those people that have their account drafted for their payments, since our payments are going up, we're going to send a letter out to them and allow them to return another check to us if that's what they want to do to keep their draft going. And we need additional postage in the amount of twenty-six hundred dollars.
I make a motion to add those, uh, that item to the agenda.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Brown, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Just need a motion to approve this?
That was to add, now to approve.
Right, right.
I make a motion to approve that addition postage.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Brown, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Mr. President, one other item has to do as a result of all the rain we've had. And, uh, we have, uh, the lawyer has prepared a proposed, uh, uh, motion for y'all to declare any, a temporary emergency on, uh, on, on the water.
Right. Under Mississippi law, the board has the authority to declare a local emergency and, under certain conditions. Mr. Wedgworth is here from E O C. If the board has any questions about it, this is simply a resolution declaring a local emergency effective, uh, then as now, not pro tonk. I'll throw a little Latin at you, sorry about that, uh, beginning on April the seventh, um, and continuing until the board takes action, uh, to eliminate the local emergency declaration. And this is on the basis of the flood emergency created by the substantial amount of rain that we got. It's effective April the seventh, beginning at two P M. Following a series of storm events and resulting storm, stormwater runoff, uh, the county has experienced significant flooding throughout the county. Mississippi Code, section thirty-three fifteen-five allows this board to declare a, a local emergency whenever there are conditions of potential disaster or peril to the safety of persons and property within Rankin County caused by these flood and storm conditions, which conditions, uh, either are or are likely to be beyond the control of the services, personnel, equipment, facilities of Rankin County, and may require us to utilize either the state or some other political subdivision in, in the way of assistance to deal with the emergency. Uh, under thirty-three fifteen seventeen, subparagraph G, uh, in declaring the local emergency, the board supervisors is required to rep, to review and approve or disapprove the, the need to continue the local emergency. We can do that at any regular meeting, we can have a special call meeting for the purpose of the review. If, uh, no action is taken at the next succeeding meeting, we are to review the situation every thirty days to determine whether or not the conditions continue to exist for us to retain the local emergency. to determine whether or not the conditions continue to exist for us to retain the local emergency declaration. The things that, uh, this will allow is that we, uh, uh, our county personnel, road department, E O C operations are provided with the ability legally under the declaration to, uh, take actions that would not otherwise be authorized to protect, uh, property and the safety of individuals, including going onto private property, uh, and that type of thing. So Bob's here in the event that you guys have any questions about the situation, but this has been requested by E O C.
So this isn't for road department to go out and repair ditches and all that?
It can be, it can be, Jay. Obviously, though, if it's in the, if it's in our right of way already, we don't need a separate declaration for that purpose. But the conditions are such that it's likely that our folks are gonna need to get on to private property to deal with some of these issues. And a declaration like this, this is just one example, would allow our, it would give us the ability to do that. We can enter on to private property and take care of emergency situations. Obviously, there has to be either property or the safety of individuals.
And who's gonna make that call?
It's the judgment call of our staff.
Okay, 'cause that could really...
I think so.
That could really open up...
Bob, what is it that we're really needing to do?
Um, basically, what this, this will allow us to also, if any of our businesses or homeowners are impacted, should the federal government come down with small business administration loans or loans for damage, this will allow our, our county residents and our county business owners to apply for those loans at a, at a low rate if they're impacted. It's also gonna help out our municipalities, which I know, uh, three that were impacted, to be able to go and, and clean out some ditches where they need to, you know, go, not so much for the county for the most part, but this, you know, would just kind of give them kind of a blanket coverage to take action that, that the cities need to take also.
Do we, you have any kind of idea how long we need to do it for?
No, sir. Uh, I had thought that the governor was gonna join us in, you know, he declared, uh, an emergency, but just didn't include us in. I would just guess, within thirty days, it'll, it'll probably go away, and we'll either find out whether we are gonna qualify. And it, it all depends, and it's kind of like the tornado strikes. You know, all these disasters, they're gonna go with the number, but it allows us to enjoin in with the other counties that were included. So if all combined, we meet the criteria, then we, we'll go in forward as a state to allow us to, or our residents and our business owners to apply for these loans to get some relief from the damage that they've incurred. But i- if we don't, you know, then we'll be, you know, that's pretty much gonna be on our own.
Okay.
Who's gonna, I mean, what would, how are you gonna alert, like, say, the road department? Will you, will you alert them, or will we? I mean, we're not, like, taking work orders.
No, 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 on the, on the county side, we get reports from the, you know, the deputies that are riding around, and, you know, our guys are riding around.
We gotta be careful with that one.
Along with the road crew guys, they've pretty much, we've got a pretty good idea of...
Okay.
What roads are gonna flood, where it's gonna flood at, and, you know, just like... If I was brimfishing in it as a kid, I know it's gonna flood down in Florence, so I mean, I got that figured out.
Dale, do we have enough personnel to be able to handle exactly what we're talking about here as far as making this happen?
We don't know what is making it happen, really.
You know, like I said, I mean, there's not a whole lot you can do, you know, as, you know, when the water's up.
Right.
But if we get a, you know, a tree, you know, into one of the, into one of the drains, you know, then they can go in there and, and, you know, dig it out if they know it's, it's in there and obscuring the flow of water.
I make a motion to add this item to the agenda.
Okay. Got a motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Johnson. Any more questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Just need action on this.
Make a motion to clear emergency.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Any additional items to be discussed? Okay.
When do we meet again?
Entertain a motion for May the first at nine A M. Recession.
Make a motion recess.
Got a motion by Mr. Bishop, recess till May the first, nine A M. Second by Mr. Morrison. Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.